Call the meeting to order for legislative session 2019-22 of the Wycomico County Council from November 5, 2019. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, our Father, amen. Thy kingdom come, Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. That is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Hail to the Lord, Jesus, to the Father and the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize in the audience tonight, we have Mr. Matt Holloway, former president of Wycomico County Council. Good to see you. Entertained a motion from council if I could to approve the consent agenda in reference to the issues as noted, minutes, legislative minutes, open work session minutes, and yes, as such.
So move.
There's a motion, second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's approved, minutes have been approved. Mr. Taylor, good evening.
Good evening. One legislative matter tonight. It is Legislative Bill 2019-07. It was introduced October 1, 2019 by the council president. It is an act to impose and declare a moratorium on the issuance of building permits for an agricultural storage tank, which will store dissolved air flotation, and that's in parentheses, DAF, wash down water from a rendering process pursuant to Wycomico County Code Chapters 225, 125, and 128. And this is for public hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2019-07. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this bill, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2019-07. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill Number 2019-07.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I know we've had work sessions on this. Any discussion, council? Seeing none, all those in favor of Legislative Bill Number 2019-07, we will go by roll call vote. All those in favor would say aye. We'll start with Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ackley.
Aye.
Vice President Dogg.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
No.
Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 2019-07 passes.
That's it for legislative matters.
Thank you. Mrs. Hurley, exactly for the public, for public information, when does this go into effect?
It will go into effect 60 days. I believe we...
It would have to be signed first, right?
It does have to be signed by the county executive. I was just trying to recall whether or not it was written as a emergency bill.
I don't think it was.
No.
I believe it's going to be 60 days from the date that the county executive signs the bill.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. So, good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Before we proceed, I do have one quick announcement, and that is the work session pertaining to the discussion for the, to fill the vacancy on a Board of Education is not going to be held tonight. That will be considered at a future council meeting. So next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 132, 2019, to approve the relocation of a portion of a forest conservation easement containing 0.04 acres located at 6441 Rockawalk and Rose, Salisbury, Maryland. At public hearing notice, was published on the county's website, and council did have a work session on this request on October 1. We do have Mr. Frank McKenzie here, if there are any questions.
This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 132, 2019. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 132, 2019. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 132, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 133, 2019, to amend the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan, to amend Sewer Map 5, to show tax map 20, Parcel 153, Parcel 185, and Parcel 215 being designated as served by sewer, and to amend Water Map 56 to show tax map 20, Parcel 153, Parcel 185, and Parcel 215 being designated by served by water. A public hearing notice was published on the county's website and in the Daily Times, stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM, and council did have a work session on this request on October 1.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 133, 2019. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 133, 2019. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 133, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next on the agenda is discussion with Chop Tank Electric on broadband initiatives. We have Mr. Matt Holloway, Chop Tank Board Member, Ms. Valerie T. Conley, Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Relations, and Mr. Matt Defoe, Manager of Government Affairs, here with us.
Thank you.
We figured at this stage, we'd be at 6:20. Say have all night.
Perfect.
We'll drag it out.
Remember how long you sat here before.
I know, I know. It's very strange being on this side of the table.
We miss having you over here.
I know. I'd like to thank you guys for having us today. Again, I'm Matt Holloway, on the Board Director of Chop Tank Electric, Wycomico County Representative. With me today, we have Valerie Conley and Matt Defoe. And we're here to present for Chop Tank Electric, we're doing something that we think will be beneficial to the whole Eastern Shore, Wycomico County. It's our broadband initiative. You know, back when the electric cooperatives were founded, that was mainly to address the issue that electric was not offered to the outer reaches, out to the areas that were not densely populated. And the cooperatives were formed to answer that issue. And now, just like then, people view broadband access and high-speed internet as important as electric connectivity. So I think that we're here to hopefully answer that call. So I'll let my folks here take over.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you for the council for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I also want to thank council staff, Laura and Lynn, they were great to work with and very responsive to our request. I wanted to make a few quick points before I hand it over to Val, who will be talking more about our broadband initiative. And the first is, as Matt mentioned, Chop Tank Electric was established in 1938 as a not-for-profit, democratically-controlled, and member-owned electric cooperative. Eighty-plus years later, we now serve 54,150 members in all nine counties on the Eastern Shore. Here in Wycomico, we serve 7,984 members, and within our service territory, we have 6,290 miles of power lines with an average of 8.6 meters per mile. So as Matt said, we do serve the very rural parts throughout our service area here on the shore. We pride ourselves on providing reliable and cost-effective electricity to our members. And over the past few years, we now are hearing more from our members, and we all have new leadership at Chop Tank Electric. And what we are looking to do is now providing the opportunity to provide reliable high-speed internet to our members in their homes and businesses. So as Matt mentioned, just like in 1930s, when investors owned utilities, would not provide electric service to the rural areas, we now see the need again to provide access using existing assets and our expertise in deploying this fiber-optic, high-speed internet to the homes. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Val, who's going to talk more about what it will take to provide such service to our members.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to run through our little PowerPoint slide. I think we sent it to you in advance, too, but if you need more copies, we can get it out. So I'm going to go right ahead and do, I think Matt and Matt touched most of what I have on this slide, but started in 1938 by 184 rural residents who came together to create the company. Today, we have 54,150 customers who are members and actually owners of Chop Tank Electric. We have 6,290 miles of power lines in nine counties. And while that is a big footprint because of the nine counties, we're in every county on the Eastern Shore, we really only account for less than 3% of all the electric meters in the state of Maryland. We have 160 full-time employees who service those lines. We have 650 miles of what is considered middle-mile fiber, so those are the lines that connect our communications within the electric service region, but will be a perfect backbone for expanding broadband out on the last mile to homes. And we are governed by a Board of Directors who are elected democratically by our members. Matt is the representative from Wycomico County. We have a board member for each of the nine counties and one for Ocean Pines, because they are a major customer and owner of Chop Tank. And now they've, well, it's not now they're telling us, we know for the last decade that Eastern Shore residents and our customers would like broadband service. We know that there have been numerous efforts out there to figure out how to bring broadband to the shore. There's been a two-year task force within the General Assembly to try and figure out how to get broadband delivered to all residents. And so we just, our board believes now that it is the time to have Chop Tank go down that road. The other thing to mention, too, is we have a new CEO at Chop Tank. He started in April, and he came from a co-op in Virginia, the Prince George Electric Cooperative. And at that co-op, he launched a company called Rural Band, and they provided and kind of came up with the process by which a co-op could provide broadband service to the members. And it was very successful. And so when Mike came to, Mike Melandro, when he came to Chop Tank in April, it was not his intent initially to try and start a broadband business here, but after he saw that we had the 650 miles of middle-mile fiber, we passed legislation last year during the General Assembly session to allow us to use that fiber and be able to lease it out to other companies if they were going to do the last mile to the house. But really, those companies are not emerging. And so he continued to see that there is a desire to get it to the home, and our board believes that, you know, our members are telling them they want us to get into this business. And so that's kind of how we got in, got to where we are today and are going down this road. The next slide just shows that there are 36% of residents in the state of Maryland who lack internet service that meets FCC standards, which is the speed at which it downloads and uploads. And many of them, most of them are in rural areas, much of them on the Eastern Shore. We included the map in the PowerPoint that was done by Salisbury University and the Eastern Shore Regional GIS?
E or C?
E.
E S G.
I can't see it, it's a small one there. This is the attempt to kind of do an overlay for where the population is and to identify where residents are served and are not served by existing broadband services. On this map, we point out that we have over 8,000 Chop Tank members in Wycomico County. And as of 2010, the population was just over 98,000 with over 13,000, close to 14,000 having no internet service at all. That meets that FCC standard. And then we also point out that Chop Tank does have an economic impact here in the county. The property tax we pay is over $500,000, so we are invested, we have employees here, and we have a lot of customers here. This slide is, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it is intended to demonstrate that it is not a unique philosophy at Chop Tank to think about getting into the broadband business. There are electric cooperatives across the country that are getting into this business, and we're getting to the point now where the FCC and other stakeholders are kind of expecting co-ops to get into this business. We put two quotes up on here that came out of the rural broadband task force, one from Addie Eckert and the other from the report itself, but again, kind of outlining how long we've been looking into this and why it's been frustrating that we haven't been able to address it. Why now? We looked at the business aspect. Home-based businesses are important. Without broadband, they can't develop. We met with Secretary Kelly Schulz, the Department of Commerce at the state level two weeks ago, and she pointed out that when the whole Bay Bridge construction started, the advice was if you can work from home, try and do that, so you don't have to get caught up in the Bay Bridge traffic. But the majority of people who are crossing the bridge do not have broadband at their home and don't have the option to work at home. Telemedicine is such an important issue here on the Eastern Shore. Medicare recently approved in-home treatment with reimbursement for follow-up care on surgeries and other treatments, but if the home that is being visited doesn't have broadband, it's not reimbursable, because you have to be able to run certain equipment to send the testing results back. Agriculture, Matt and I both worked in the agriculture industry before we went to Chop Tank, and we know that if we're going to meet the goals for Chesapeake Bay cleanup and help each county meet the TMDL goals that we're trying to meet, agriculture needs to be part of getting into the technology network that's out there, and right now, most of them can't use, take advantage of those technologies. Educational opportunities, we're constantly hearing from families who tell us they have to go to the McDonald's or drive to a local business and sit in the parking lot at night so their kids can complete their homework. And so, and we're also hearing from folks who are either seeking additional training or still in the process of doing their college education that could do online courses but don't have the ability to do that from home without the broadband service. So the point here is that it's not just about Netflix, which everyone loves, but it is something that will drive economic development as well as provide educational opportunities that don't exist now for a lot of our citizens. Again, we have the 600, why is it Chop Tank that needs to do this? We have the middle-mile fiber, and what we're seeking is authorization so that we can leverage our existing assets. We have borrowing power, we own equipment, we have an excellent staff who can participate in delivering the service. We are also trying to position ourselves to apply for the federal grant money that'll become available next summer. The FCC has announced they're going to put out $20 billion across the country for rural broadband deployment. And so we want to put Chop Tank in the position to bring as much of that money back to the Eastern Shore as possible to roll out this program. We want to use the economies of scale to get there. We own poles, we own equipment, we want to use it in this process. And we've been a trusted partner with our members across the shore for years, and we think that we will continue that. What do we need to make this happen? I mentioned that last year, we had a bill pass to allow us to use our easements to deliver broadband. This year, we will be pursuing legislation in Annapolis, that we will be seeking support from counties across the Eastern Shore as we move forward in this, but this will allow us to become member-regulated. And that concept is not new either. There are over 825 cooperatives in 36 states across this country. 83% of them are member-regulated, which means their Board of Directors, the Matt Holloway's of the world and his brethren, would make some of the decisions that now they make decisions on, and then we have to apply to the Public Service Commission to actually implement. We believe that we will eliminate duplicative regulation and some of the duplicative cost. And everyone always asks, will there be accountability if you don't have to go before the Public Service Commission on rates and/or services that we enter into? And we believe that the answer is absolutely. Again, an elected Board of Directors, they serve three-year terms, every year about a third of our board is up for election. And as you all know, if people are dissatisfied, they know how to get in touch with you if they want to voice their opinion on something that's happening. So we know if we have customers who are not happy, Matt and the other board members are going to hear from them very quickly. I'm not going to go through all of these talking points, but the one that I wanted to point out again is the $20 billion from the FCC, and that'll become available next summer. So it's critical for us to try and achieve this legislative change this year. In short, we think we can do it faster and more comprehensively and make the economics work. We know that other companies that have set up have just said it's not economically feasible to run broadband to, our average customer base is eight houses per mile, and most other companies in broadband or providing cable service are looking at 24 to 29 homes per mile in order to make a cash flow. So we get to the what can you do to help? So we outlined a lot of things that people can do to help us on this, but we're specifically asking county governments to provide a letter of support as we move into the legislative session. The intent is that the bills will be introduced as Eastern Shore delegation bills, and we're going to present it as a local bill to address a local problem here on the shore, and we're hoping that we can all work together to make this happen.
Okay. Any questions?
I've talked to a lot of my constituents that don't have access to the current cable, because they're past the dead end, and they don't see getting it in the future. And I was trying to look at the map to find out what areas, if that's what you were showing, what areas had the internet, or was it the areas that it was available, the map that you had earlier in your slide?
So the map that was, that was in the presentation was designed using the current FCC information, so if one person in a census block has broadband service, that entire census block is considered to be served. The FCC is in the process of trying to improve those maps, because we know that's not the case, there are unserved people. But, so that map was intended to show where they know there is service and when there, where there is no service, but based on the existing information that's out there on census blocks.
So it's showing where there is no service, but it's not showing if it's available through Chop Tank?
I think it, right. So we would overlay the Chop Tank service area. Our intent would be to deliver broadband service to our members first, but I don't, so electric service is defined by territories, but broadband service is not. The federal government has said there's no limit on where broadband can go. So our intent is to primarily, or at the beginning, serve our members. But if we're in a region where we have members here and there are people adjacent that don't have broadband service, we're not going to leave them out. Our intent is to try and incorporate people as we move along and provide that service and that access.
Well, that's good to hear, and I do support this.
Great.
And to your point, if may, we overlapped our service area with the maps that ESG or C did, and we know 40% of our members, out of the 54,000 members, are not, either don't have access or are underserved, they don't meet that FCC standard, 40%.
So you will be able to provide to them? Okay. I think that's important.
And we will, at some point, invest in a program that will allow us to actually interface with members to find out if they do have service, what speed it is, and if they're interested. But we just haven't gone down that road yet, but that will be part of the business plan as we spin this up, so we'll be able to clearly identify where those needs are.
Sure.
I can't say that I know much about internet speeds, or if you told me, it would make sense, but is this going to be competitive with other, let's say I'm, you know, living in Mardella, and what's, what is the service going to look like? Is it?
So initially, our plan is to service areas that don't have any service at all. So if you have a provider now, depending on what speed and what kind of service that is, our initial intent would be to go to areas where there's no service, and partially, that's partially the intent, because the FCC money is going to be designated to areas with no service. So those will be the primary service areas. Our intent is not to go out and provide service where there is already comprehensive service, because the way to make this business work is to go into areas where there is no service and get a high take rate. If we try and go into a, to an area where there's already significant service, it's going to be a very low take rate at a very expensive cost to us to try and run it. So, I mean, eventually, as everything gets spun up, there will probably be competition out there, but for the foreseeable future, we're going to be addressing people that have no access at all.
And the federal dollars just focused on the last mile, can't worry?
Last mile and unserved, yes.
What is, say five, seven years from now, what does success look like to Chop Tank?
I think, Mike Melandro is saying he would like to see all of the Chop Tank members in our service area served within five to seven years, maybe 10, I mean, it took 10 years, I think, on the electric, did it take 10, or 10 to get electric to everybody?
Yeah.
We think that running fiber is probably faster, and particularly, if we're out there servicing the electric areas, if we can put fiber down as we go, it's even faster.
Yeah.
This will be voluntary to the customers, correct?
It will.
I mean, we won't be forced to take it.
No, but, but the intent is to be able to run it, the same way we run electricity near a house, so if the next person who moves into that house wants it, it's not monumental to have us come back and run it many, many miles, it would be near that house, and it would just be, you know, getting it to the house at that point.
It's only for, is it only for Chop Tank, members of Chop Tank Electric, who are serviced by Chop Tank Electric?
It would not be limited to that, that our intent is to service them first, because they own the company and they're the ones asking for this service, it's their investment in the company right now. But if we were to add people who were outside the Chop Tank service area but don't have broadband now, they would, by virtue of buying in to the broadband service, become a member of Chop Tank Cooperative.
If the council decides to, you know, send a letter of endorsement, are we going to upset anybody? It's always nice to know when you send a letter out not to be too naive about it.
Right. I mean, we've been trying to work with all the other...
I wouldn't want Maryland Broadband calling us and saying there's a problem or something.
So is Comcast going to call us?
Well, I think the thing is Comcast has been, has had the opportunity to run service in these rural areas for the last decade, and it doesn't, they have said it doesn't make economic sense for them to go out and run broadband in these areas that we're targeting.
Is there any other conflict that?
The Public Service Commission may not love it, because part of what we're doing is becoming deregulated in some areas where we're letting our board do it rather than the Public Service Commission, but again, very, very small number of electric meters, less than 3% of the electric customers in the state, and we think that the broadband issue is critical enough that it deserves this exception. And we are building into the legislation the opportunity, if our, if our members don't believe this is working out every time, they can opt back into PSC regulation if they think for some reason it's gone awry. But we hope it never gets to that point, because we have elections every year, and we think that they would just elect new board members if they didn't like the direction it was going.
Does Maryland Broadband come into play with any of this at all?
They have middle-mile fiber as well, so we would probably end up, well, we're a member of the Maryland Broadband Cooperative, but some of their assets would probably be used by us or rented by, whatever the lease arrangement would be, but there's this middle-mile fiber as well.
And they use some of our assets.
Right.
Oh, really?
So it would be a partnership that we would try and work out to get service out there.
You're talking about five or six years for this to come into, what do you see down the road as far as internet service via satellite? I mean, that's advancing all the time, I was wondering how that was going to, you know, competition.
From what we understand, fiber optic is the gold standard. That's always going to be reliable, and it's always going to have the highest speeds. You know, I'm not 100% sure what satellite's going to end up looking like at the end of the day, but we know if we can put fiber to a house, they're always going to have reliable service.
We have phone lines to houses, and that seems to be something that's disappearing, you know what I mean? So that's...
And those are wired, so this is fiber optic.
I would say that, just in my opinion, satellite doesn't near approach fiber, but I think wireless technology is advancing, but this also goes hand-in-hand with this. So we are providing, we're planning to provide fiber close to the home. If the wireless technology gets there where we can go from the pole to the home without running actual fiber there, I mean, that, we're there, you know, we're helping to benefit that. So I think it's all, I think we're going down the right route.
Does 5G play into that, or does 5G only play into telephone service?
No, I think 5G is what we're talking about, if that, you know, if that wireless technology gets there.
It has to get close enough to the place you're trying to serve, though, because the long distances are what is making it more difficult for people to take advantage of the wireless.
So if we have the fiber down the poles, then 5G might come into play.
And also, in the FCC auction for next year, and the $20 billion, in the round of, the first round, they look at fiber optic first as the most reliable. So we're, if we position ourselves through this legislation and the business model, we would be first in line for those dollars.
Any other questions?
I remember members of the General Assembly trying to get broadband across the Eastern Shore about 15 years ago, and I tell you, it's long overdue, especially if we got kids that need it. I mean, it really bothers me to think that a child, a family has to go to a McDonald's parking lot to try to finish homework, and I can see that happening. So I would like to see us support this letter.
We appreciate you taking the time to explain this to us, so we'll certainly put something together and get a consensus from the council and see what we can do to help.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate it.
The next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 134, 2019, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant from the Maryland Department of Planning in the amount of $20,000 for activities conducted by the Wycomico County Council Committee since 2020. Census 2020. And we have Lori Carter here, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 134, 2019. Salute. Second. Discussion. Ms. Carter? Good evening.
Good evening.
You have some money for us?
Twenty billion, but. Good morning, afternoon. Good morning. Good morning, good afternoon to everyone. I do apologize. Lori Carter, Director of Planning and Zoning. Here, I'm asking the council to favor us in being able to accept the award of $20,000 to help us with our Census 2020 operations for this year. One of the things that we're looking at is being able to utilize these funds for media. That's going to be one of our largest goal where we think we'll be able to get the best bang with a buck.
Obviously, I support this, but I was just wondering when the census will be over?
When will be over? Well, actually, the count begins, well, it won't be over until April the 1st.
I know I've seen representatives for months now.
Yeah, well, because it's a very, very important initiative for one. It takes a lot of, takes a lot of groundwork and so therefore, you know, it's required us to kind of put in a lot of long hours to get it done, so.
I appreciate you guys working on it.
Yeah, so we're just asking everyone to please make sure you inform your constituents to please not ignore what comes in the mail from the census.
Sure. And I apologize for the effort that you're making on this. I know it's a large, the last couple meetings I've been to, there have been probably 30, 30 members of the community. And the city of Salisbury is playing a really strong role in this as well. Really appreciate it.
And I would like to make an appeal to any of the towns to please come, I think we have the town of Hebron, but we're definitely trying to reach out to some of the other communities as well. We don't want to let anyone go. We want everybody to be involved.
Can you elaborate why it's important to do the census?
I most definitely have a little list here.
Especially financially. You don't have to run down a whole list.
I'm just going to give a small little list here. Just make sure that I don't forget anything in particular.
You have two pages there.
Oh, well, that's just, those are notes for me for later, for something else. It's very important because everything related to funding schools, roads, everything from the playgrounds, the parks, everything is connected to the census dollar. And that's representation, you guys. You are connected to census. So it's very imperative for everyone to get involved. We're definitely trying to hit those areas which are the hard count, which is the seniors, which is children from zero to four. We're definitely trying to reach the actual minorities. Those are those types of areas that we need to be able to get those numbers in. So that's why we're busy and we do thank you for your actual participation. And we just want everybody to get involved. Tell everybody about it that they need to participate.
Ms. Carter, do you have something that I can share with the commissioners and the mayor in my district?
I most certainly can. I most certainly can. And I think I've tried to reach out to Mr. Magini, I believe it is, Joe Magini, I believe.
He's in, that's, I think Joe.
Is it Pittsfield Willards? Right, he's in your district.
I think he does represent Shaw.
And he does, I think he does some work. He does some work in regards to Sharktown as well.
He's what they call a circuit rider.
He's a circuit rider. He is definitely a circuit rider, definitely. But yeah, so we definitely, and it's hard for us to also, to reach renters as well, so, college students, you know. So we're actually partnering with Salisbury University and other, other important organizations that is needed to help us and the 50-plus community as well. We don't want to forget us.
Part of the grant requested that there be a proposal?
Yes, and actually the proposal is, it has to be submitted by December 31st. It is our goal to have that submitted by next week.
Okay, if you could share that with us, that would be great.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, we didn't have that in the material.
Sure. It's, actually, the way that they have the proposal set up for this year, it's actually, everything is done online, but I'll make sure to make a copy of it and make sure you get a copy of that.
Do you know at this time how the 20,000 is planned to be dispersed?
We're basically looking at exactly what I said in regards to media, what can get us the best bang. We're looking to possibly partner with some of the other counties to help that dollar stretch in that particular area.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Television, radio. We're all in the same area, so it just makes sense.
Yeah, that's a good point. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 134, 2019, say aye. Aye. Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 135, 2019, approving certain zoning classification and density of residential development. A property having a premise address of 927 and 929 Johnson Road, Salisbury, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 48 as parcel 270, consisting of 1.77 acres, more or less upon annexation thereof by the city of Salisbury. And we have Mr. William T. Holland here, Permits and Inspections Manager with the city of Salisbury, if there are any questions.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 135, 2019.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Holland, does the council have any questions?
I've looked it over on the.
All those in favor of Resolution 135, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. President, that's all I have at this time.
Michael didn't need all that, all that paperwork. It looked like I was carrying it. It looked good though. You scared us with all that.
You guys enjoy the rest of you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session so that we can enter into the County Board of Health.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye. Post. We're now convened as the County Board of Health and we're delighted to have Lori Brewster here to give us a report on the health of the county. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Going great, thank you.
So I want to remind everyone that we, back in about this time last year, started working with Peninsula Regional Medical Center in developing our priorities for the next three years, doing a community health needs assessment. We decided to work in collaboration with the hospital. We have to have a community health needs assessment as part of our accreditation. They have to have a community health needs assessment as part of their IRS responsibilities. Theirs is every three years, ours is every five. So we just decided that we would work with them and do every three. It just made sense to garner the dollars and put them all together. So the priorities that were identified from focus groups as well as looking at the primary and secondary data that was pulled together from the consultant that we use, Conduent Health, we prioritize the areas being behavioral health, cancer, and diabetes, which will be the focus for the three years. I don't think anybody will say that those aren't areas that we should look at. So we have just completed the draft of the implementation plan in conjunction with Peninsula Regional and Somerset Health Department. It's being finalized this month and will be presented to the full Local Health Improvement Coalition in December for their acknowledgement and approval. And you may or may not have heard about our safe station initiative. We applied for dollars through the Midshore Behavioral Health Department and received dollars to open up a safe station. If you recall, Anna Rundle was the first and they put it in the firehouse. And then Talbot County tried, has put theirs in their police station. We did something a little different. We were funded as well as Worcester County, Worcester opened theirs in Ocean City in the fire station. We didn't want to tie up the fire station, so we moved on to the, blocking, the Recovery Resource Center. And they were very willing to work with us. And this is a place that our individuals that are in need of addiction treatment go frequently. So we began that, opened up in August of 2019. It's offered in conjunction with the city of Salisbury EMS because we wanted to make sure that these individuals, if they needed medical services, received them. And of course, the Recovery Resource Center. In the first two months alone, we saw 38 individuals and we linked 35 of them to treatment services, which is a higher rate of seeing people and assisting people, but also linking with treatment than any safe station has had. I think the last, the first month that Worcester was open, they had, I think, the first two months, they had 15 individuals. So we're seeing this as a success in trying to address some of the behavioral health issues in Wycomico County. Narcan training update. Our opioid coordinator has been very busy training county employees and they have been to every department in the county and have trained individuals. Those that wanted to have the Narcan, have it on their person. If they didn't, then we also have a supply that is put in each department so that if there is a need, individuals can utilize it. Our scale program, I'm very excited about. We worked in cooperation with Somerset County Health Department to write a grant to focus on pre-diabetes program for women and children, which includes cooking demonstrations, healthy recipes, taking these families shopping so they know how to purchase healthy foods, and then the whole component of exercise. And this is going very well and we'll have more to come on that in the future. And then, of course, our SWIFT program, which is the Salisbury-Wycomico Integrated First Care Team, which is in conjunction with the city of Salisbury EMS and PRMC continues in operation. We are providing non-emergent services to individuals that are frequent flyers to the 911 system, and we all know that they exist, as well as those that are frequent flyers to the emergency department. And we've had great success with that and we are into year two with the funding from the Maryland Commission, Resource Commission, but this is our third year of the program. So we're really excited. We are addressing some of the issues. The final one that we are trying to find some funding for is assistance with the cancer initiatives. Back in the beginning of this fiscal year, the State Department received a cut from the Center for Disease Control with their cancer funds and particularly around breast and cervical cancer. And so they made Wycomico the hub for the lower shore for those women that needed access to treatment. It has been a challenge, to say the least, because we have to be in all three counties, but we are making that work so that we can continue the care of the women that need services.
I was just wondering, are you still the joint health officer with Somerset County?
I certainly am.
Okay. You stay busy, man.
Yes, keeps me out of trouble.
I don't know about that.
Yes, it does.
Well, you're doing a good job and I think that the Wycomico Goes Purple campaign was very successful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we reached out to a lot of areas, different areas in the county and created, created a huge awareness. That's good.
Well, awareness is key. We have to break the stigma related to behavioral health issues in order for people to step up to get treatment.
Seeing them. You know, we've been seeing a lot on the news lately about the vaping issue and I've written a paper online today with an issue with, in Wycomico County, with somebody having problems.
Actually, the individual is hospitalized in Wycomico County, but it's a Worcester County resident. I'm not saying we have not had cases. A few weeks ago, the Secretary of Health made it a reportable illness. So now if the hospital ends up with an individual that has respiratory illness due to vaping, they have to be reported to the health department and that's how we got that report. We've been doing a lot of media interaction, Facebook, Instagram, everything we can to get people to understand that vaping is causing this issue and it can kill you.
They're not, you're non-smoking classes are not, had they, had they been teaching that vaping could be an alternative in the past? Have they ever done that?
Not to my knowledge. I don't attend every class, but that is, that is concerning that people think that vaping is a gateway to cessation and it has not been that way.
I will mention though, Wycomico County Health Department, I think the Instagram and Facebook page, you guys are doing an incredible job. It is seriously, I was amazed, I saw a post the other day that had like 650 shares. That's just one post after the next, so I applaud you for being able to speak up. I mean, it's getting passed around the entire Delmar Peninsula, some of the pieces that have been put up. I don't know whoever's doing that, but keep up the great work.
Well, thank you. We made a big effort to get out there and we, at one point, had more in our community than some of the larger jurisdictions.
Yeah, I know that some counties have passed laws in reference to vaping and all that, but from what I can tell so far, it appears that most of the vaping issues, especially with the younger generation, is when they're mixing THC in with that product and that's really seems to be what's causing the problem?
That's what the CDC is, is saying at this point, and they come out with weekly updates. They're usually dated on a Tuesday, but they come out on Thursday and we're linked with that report, so it will automatically be put on our Facebook page. But they're saying that it's, it's individuals that are generally smoking THC or some other type of product that is causing this.
Yeah, because, you know, when you read that other counties are passing local legislation to prevent it within a mile, stores within a mile of a school, you're wondering whether or not we, we need to be proactive about it, but I think we'd have to defer to you as to when you think, or if you ever think that might be something Wycomico County might want to consider.
I will certainly sit down with the superintendent of schools to look at what they're seeing as far as vaping products in the schools and get back with you.
And I brought that up, I guess, the last time you were here, maybe during the summer, and I asked you about parks and recs, if there was any regulations then. You said no because I saw a woman puffing away around a bunch of kids at a Little League field.
Another question I had for you is that not too long ago, an individual locally passed away from anaphylactic shock. It made me ask whether or not it is required through the state of Maryland or any other authority that EpiPens are to be required in businesses or places of gathering or whether that is beneficial, whether it's too regulatory. What would be your opinion on that?
They're not required in businesses and private companies. EpiPens are required in school systems. I will tell you, they have become very costly.
Right.
And a lot of people that need them and have a prescription for them, if they don't have a prescription plan or not even getting them filled due to the cost. Do I think that we should have access to them? Yes. Perhaps we can look at, I'm not real sure how we would do this, but work with the groups that have the deferpolators in the, like in, yeah, in the malls and around town in various public locations.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea, sure. And I would want to sort of have a shotgun approach, a knee jerk reaction to, to one incident because I don't think there are that many incidents that you've, that you've found, that these, that that happens.
See it more in school-aged children because they come into contact with things that they are allergic to and they're not sure that there's anything in what they're looking at, like peanut allergies.
Sure.
That's a huge issue in schools.
In this particular instance, from what I understand, they did have EpiPens at the location as well, it just didn't work, so. Thought I would ask. Any other questions?
I just have one question for you. Wycomico Goes Purple, that was, you did an excellent job. It was really, it was really informative to the public. I was wondering, under the behavioral health, are there any other, are there any other things you're going to be focusing on?
We're doing a lot surrounded behavioral health and we have, I'm not sure if you've met our opioid coordinator, Christina. met our opioid coordinator, Christina Bowie Simpson. We're doing a lot of media campaigns beginning in December, as well as we're going to be looking at the possibility of bringing in a speaker in the spring that can talk about Surrounding mental health issues, we are working with the Lower Shore Clinic and Go-Getters to expand their crisis beds, so that individuals that are in need of crisis treatment don't have to necessarily be sitting in an emergency department. My goal is that they should not be sitting in there, that we need to get the people that need emergent care their treatment, and we can treat the mental health and crisis in other places.
What is the answer to that? Because Dorchester County is now closed, their mental health, and East, it looks like Easton's not going to have one. So we have PRMC, and we have Chestertown.
Right.
And that's it.
And PRMC is trying to open up a child and adolescent unit, inpatient unit, and I think that that will be of assistance, because that's what Dorchester focused on for a long time. What is the answer? I'm not really sure. What we're seeing in the state system and the state beds is that they are tied up with individuals that are court ordered or have some type of criminal background. So the individuals that are in need of inpatient psychiatric care are required to go to local hospitals. But we are looking to expand on all kinds of programs in the community if funding becomes available.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Laura, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Attending motion from Council adjourned from the County Board of Health, so we may reconvene in the legislative session. It's a move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. We now reconvene as the Wycomico County Council. First item, Mr. Roser, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. I'll call your attention to Resolution 136, 2019, concerning a report on the latest inquiry to the fuel system.
Attending motion from Council, approve Resolution 136, 2019, so move.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you. This particular project focused on gasoline purchases under a new system implemented by the county, known as the WEC system. And in way of background, previous to the implementation of this new system, gasoline was purchased and dispensed solely at Rhodes Division through a single terminal. This system allows users in the county to purchase gas at most retail outlets throughout the county, which is a tremendous advantage to Parks and Rec and the Sheriff's Office especially, since they don't have to travel across the county to Rhodes Division every time they run low on gasoline. It is used in conjunction with the leasing program that we have in place with Enterprise. We reviewed internal controls and concluded that the controls in place were satisfactory to their stated purposes at this point. As far as the findings, the individual departments that we tested seem to have developed their own system of internal controls tailored to their specific needs. Their record keeping is different, for example, at the Sheriff's Office than it is at the airport, than it is at Parks and Rec, because they have different needs. They have different ways of accounting for the fuel usage by their people, and we think that these particular focused types of internal controls for each department work at this point. We look at usage by the county year over year. Last year, they were at Rhodes Division, as I said, this year, we're in the new system. Some departments are using more gasoline, and again, this is just gasoline. We haven't changed anything as far as the diesel fuel is concerned. It's still at Rhodes Division, it's still under the same regiment and control it was before. This particular project did not look at diesel fuel. As I said, some departments use slightly more, and some departments use slightly less year over year. We think that the departments that actually use more, we traced the reasons down to the elimination of purchase card transactions for fuel, which are, were necessary especially for transport, for the Department of Corrections, and for the Sheriff's Office, they're no longer having to use purchase cards. And we have replaced some of our diesel pickups with gasoline burning pickups, three-quarter ton, one-ton pickup trucks. Our recommendations were to make use of available AI, artificial intelligence that is embedded in the WEC program, that we are not currently using, and purchasing is working with WECs to try to put some additional controls in place. The way AI manifests itself in this system would be their algorithms that they put in there that would kick it out, for example, if the mileage didn't make sense, if someone put a hundred gallons of gasoline in a sedan, for instance, things like that, anomalies that would kick out that transaction and notify someone. And we plan to follow up in sixty days on this new system. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Mr. Roser, was this part of the audit plan for the year?
Yes.
The only question I had, Mr. Roser, was the one portion where it said there was non-county agencies allowed to purchase fuel at Rhodes, was there any, did you find that as any kind of a serious violation, or what was it, just a misunderstanding?
No, it was, no, it was an agreement that we had with, with other agencies that weren't directly related to the county, that were purchasing fuel at the Rhodes Division substation, we were billing them. They were, the Health Department, the Housing Authority, the library, and Lower Shore Enterprises. They are, they are no longer in our system, simply because gasoline is not available at Rhodes Division pretty much anymore. Now, it's not fair to say that gasoline is not available at all at Rhodes Division. We're still using that, that pump and that facility for such things as gas cans for equipment for Parks and Rec and Rhodes Division, so that they can fill their gas cans for the small equipment. And they're tracking that with the Prokey system that we had before, and we took a look at that as well, and didn't see anything there that raised concern.
The history on that, John, was at one time, we used to, they did that all the time, and they bought the gas for, for what it cost us, and a few years ago, we changed that and started doing, what, like a three cent upcharge or something to help maintain the equipment. So now, apparently, we're not using that system anymore for that, so.
Correct.
We bind the fuel somewhere else.
Also, we're not having to bill those people, bill those agencies, and spend the time it takes personnel, record keeping, to keep those other agencies in gasoline. We're no longer doing that, so we realize the savings there.
Okay. Or audit them. Or audit it, right?
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roser. All those in favor of Resolution 136, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Roser.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, I see I was mistaken when I said the only legislative matter I had was the first item, you're back. About to clean up, I guess. This is a, this is legislative bill 2019-08, introduced tonight by the President of the Council at the request of the county executive. It is an act to amend Wycomico County Code, Chapter 174, nuisances to add Article III, balloons, Section 174-14 through 174-17, to prohibit the release of balloons into the atmosphere, and according to the agenda, Mr. Weston Young is here tonight on this.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Attending motion from Council to introduce legislative bill number 2019-08.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Weston, I know you're here for this.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening. If you could let everybody know who you are.
Sure, Weston, yeah, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. I was out with strep throat at the last meeting when you had a work session on this. But I believe all the changes that were discussed have been made, and this is something that we're interested in. Anecdotally, when I had my Jeep and I'd go out to Acetate, this was the number-one waste product I'd find washed up on the beaches there. And we think this is a net positive for the environment. Queen Anne's County did something recently, and I believe the state is planning something as well, and the language of this bill will mimic what the state has when that passes.
Any questions? I'm glad you're back.
No, thank you.
In front of me, we all have it, is the proposed state legislation by Senator Lamb. If the state is doing legislation, why do we need to do our own legislation?
It's not guaranteed that it'll pass at the state level, and we're interested in putting something in place in lieu of, if we get preempted by the state, so be it. But this is something that, you know, we've had, we've had interest, we've been raised out by many citizens, and especially the environmental groups, that they support this bill.
Josh?
Have any other counties other than Queen Anne's passed?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
I believe there's one, at least one other county that's considering it. I offhand forget what that is, but I've seen references to it.
The Council should note also that the actual bill that's, came with the briefbook, is not the actual bill. It's the one that's been printed, Mrs. Hurley has printed for everybody on the desk, only some small changes to it. The initial legislation talked about large number of balloons.
That was vague. Yeah, that was, that was vague.
You know, like trying to figure out what the definition of, you know, how you're going to arrest somebody for a large number of balloons, I mean, who's, how are you going to evaluate that? And my other concern on that was also in Section 174-15, there's two references, and it just says, it doesn't say balloons plural, it just says balloon. So now we're getting down to the nuts and bolts of the possibility that somebody could get in trouble because they released one balloon, because that's what this says.
Sure. No, that's, that's a good point, and I believe the change was made to try to end the vagueness of the large number of balloons.
No, that was changed to just balloons, which is good.
Sure.
But, and I've had a million discussions with Mrs. Hurley over there until she was pulling her hair out, but I don't see how we can go with any other way, it's just going to be, as she stated, it's going to be up to the discretion of whoever's enforcing this to, you know, to make that decision on their own.
Sure.
I don't think anybody's ever going to get arrested for one balloon.
Yeah, the intention is not for the kid that lets their balloon go to be tackled by a sheriff deputy by any means. But, yeah, it's more to discourage, you know, a balloon release to commemorate or, you know, any sort of event.
Mr. Penn, and I do have one remark, if I can make it.
Yes.
At the last meeting, we talked about this in work session, I did suggest, I used the word synchronize, and I said that we should synchronize this with state legislation, and I see language has been added using my language. But I would suggest a little bit more specific language than that, and I have actually proposed it. It is on page 141 of the briefing book, you can look at it, but I would suggest what I've, because it's a little bit more specific, and I think it's a good idea to be specific on this. So I would urge that change.
Have you had the chance to make yourself familiar with them?
I have not, but, you know, we're, we, I don't think that'll kill the intention of the bill whatsoever, and it's good.
It's legal jargon.
Yeah. It's good to get specific suggestion added. I don't see any issue with that.
Might also point out that under the state legislation, it looks like the intention is to make the county the enforcer of the state law.
That would be unusual.
Yeah.
So can you tell us how this will be enforced, and is it admissible in court when you don't have the evidence?
Again, you know, I don't, I don't see it being, and honestly, I don't know, I imagine it would be law enforcement being notified that a group did a balloon release. How do you count how many balloons went up there, you know, that, I'm not certain, but it is to help discourage these releases. If we had better language, or, you know, a better way of anticipating it, but how do we know if it was fourteen balloons or fifteen balloons? You know, at a certain point, you can't see.
Is there going to be any effort to notify retailers that sell these balloons, that it's now going to be illegal to do a multiple release like that? I know some of the stores, you know, sell numbers of balloons at some time, like the party stores, I don't.
Sure.
Is there going to be any effort to notify them, or make a posting at those stores that it is illegal to do this?
We, yeah.
Because we know how enforcement, enforcement's going to be tough.
Yeah, enforcement will be tough, and it'll be more education. We can look into that.
That's a really good point.
Yeah.
I think that would be.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can try to put out press releases that it's passed, and then, you know, yeah, it'll be, it'll be difficult, especially when you change something more at the grassroots level, when you get a state or federal, say Styrofoam ban, that's, that's a lot different, because manufacturers have to listen to that. They're not necessarily going to listen to us on this, they're still going to produce latex and Mylar balloons. But again, the one balloon, while it can have an impact out there, we're trying to avoid the hundreds of balloons release. But, yeah, we can look into that to see the best way of educating, and, yeah.
Yeah, sort of site location, like Joe says, where they sell it, sort of, some information that lets them know that it's not legal anymore, even if it's just posted or something to that effect.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2019-08, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, introduction passes. Mr. Hurley?
We can have a public hearing at the first meeting in December, which is going to be December the third at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Weston.
Thank you, Weston.
This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concern.
Kelsey Maddox, I'm in Wycomico County, and I'm going to make an announcement about an event from the Census Committee, and I do have flyers for each of you. On Tuesday, November 19th, at eight o'clock, the faith-based section of the Census Group is sponsoring a breakfast, which is at no cost for clergy only, so if you're not a clergy person, you're not invited to this one. We expect about seventy-five people to attend, and at that breakfast, there will be discussion of the Census information and what we need. This is one of two parts. The second one will occur in January, and what we will be asking each of the clergy to do is to designate in each of their religious establishments, two people to be sure that all the information is sent out, and that people understand. It's really important that we get this, that we get this done.
I agree.
So I do have this. And if anyone's in the audience would like some, I have a few more. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am John Brown, a resident of the county, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Wycomico Environmental Trust this evening. It's going to be no surprise that we support the bill that you just put on the road to enactment, hopefully, about the balloons. We really compliment the county executive for bringing it up, and compliment the county council now for beginning the legislative process. Don't need to say much about it, we, it's probably, as you discussed a minute ago, in large part, an educational type of endeavor. We don't expect to have lots of people arrested ever, if ever, for such a thing, but it is something that we, we've all read about the giant sea turtles that can live long lives unless they get these. But it is something that we, we've all read about the giant sea turtles that can live long lives unless they get these impacted in their intestines. The sea life, which is really affected by it. And I, in the woods, walking around, will find these ugly balloons that I pick up and bring back to the trash. But that's hopefully not doing any harm there unless Mr. McCain understands or knows of deer eating them. I, I don't know. But anyhow, we do compliment all of you and commend you for this and, and thank you for taking it up. It's not a huge deal, but it's something and it's, it's a beginning, showing that we do care about the environment. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other public comments?
Good evening, President Cannon, Council ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joan Smith, resident of Wycomico County. These are the opening words of the Kerwin Commission's report. When our governor and General Assembly created the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education, they recognized that the fate of our state and the opportunities it creates for our children to enjoy successful careers and rewarding lives depends on the quality, equal access and effectiveness of pre-K-12 education in every zip code across the state, end quote. The Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education, the Kerwin Commission, made recommendations for changes in education to achieve these goals. In the last few years, Dr. Hanlon has established similar priorities in developing her Imagine initiatives. In the 19, in the 2019 legislative session, a bill designed to accomplish the Kerwin Commission recommendations was passed and money was released to begin the first year of implementation. In the coming legislative session, a new funding formula will bring to fruition the plan to facilitate greater schools for our children. And that will inevitably lead to a thriving Wycomico County, a premier destination, not just a location on a map. Policy areas the Kerwin recommendations include are expanding pre-K to full day for all four-year-olds, to recruit and most importantly, to retain a high-quality, diverse staff of educators in order to elevate the status of teaching, to improve working conditions and increase teachers' pay to draw in and retain quality career educators, to fully align college and career readiness pathways and to expand the all-important CTE programs to fill the essential positions in the workforce of our community. To continue the campaign for more learning time and much less local testing, to increase learning by restoring the learning environment, to, to schedule students' classes, providing time for optimal learning experiences and to effectively allow more time for collaboration and planning for educators. In other words, these policy areas provide the opportunity for greater success through access to resources, wraparound services and intensive support for our students who are not already on a track for college and career readiness. This evening, I'm inviting you to learn more about the impact of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future at a community forum on Thursday, November 14th at 6:00 P.M. The forum will be held at the Wycomico County Public Library here in downtown Salisbury. Shawn Johnson, a member of the committee that developed the new funding formula, is among the honorable guests. So this is a perfect opportunity for our community to learn as much as possible about all aspects of the Kerwin Commission's work and the implications for its impact on our community. This is a must-attend event Thursday, November 14th, 6:00 P.M., Wycomico County Library. Today's students are tomorrow's workforce. Our students must be prepared for the responsibilities and rewards that await them. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing each of you on Thursday.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments. Josh?
Well, I just want to say briefly, I've got my I voted sticker on. I don't know if, I know Pittsfield was having elections in Salisbury. To all the folks who did run for office or chose to, I just wanted to say appreciate putting forth your name and good luck to all the folks who, who ran tonight. I guess we'll see results pretty soon.
Larry?
I just want to tag along on that. I voted as well. Poll's closed at 7:00, so I wish all the people that stepped up to the plate, I wish them well.
Any other council comments? Bill?
Just a quick order of business. A couple of years ago, actually, my firm had done a real estate appraisal on Colony Mill Road property. County recently asked for an update to that. The Ethics Commission actually reviewed that request and permitted the request for us to update that since it was done a couple of years ago. So it was just something that they felt I shouldn't let the public know.
Joe?
I want to send out get well wishes to one of our county EMTs. Ms. Ruth Lewis was injured last weekend, or this past weekend in an accident driving one of the ambulances. It's not serious. She probably thinks it's more serious than it is, but anyway, it just shows that, you know, our EMTs and our volunteer farmhands are out there every day helping us and they're not without being injured occasionally. So I want to, Ruth is watching this, I think she does, I wish her get well quick, so.
Any other comments?
I had the opportunity this weekend to tour the Whitehaven Historical District, which is absolutely beautiful. And the Historical Society is having a Christmas bazaar December 3rd. It's, it's December 3rd from 3:00 to 6:00. 3:00 to 6:00 to, to help fund the Historical Society.
Any other comments?
Under presidential comments, been somewhat busy. We had the Wine Festival, as everybody does know, which was well-attended and very successful. It was a lot of fun. And not only that, but had the opportunity to, to go through the Pemberton Woods there. And there's an invasive species in that woods. Councilman McCain and, and Councilwoman Athely also attended. What was that species called? What was?
Wisteria.
Wisteria. And it's really amazing how the wisteria has gotten into a lot of the trees and just sort of pulled the, pulled the branches down. You know, taken the life out of the trees. And we're talking massive amounts of forest that are, that are falling subject to this, to wisteria. So I commend, I commend them for making, going to the efforts to try to address this and getting out ahead of it. Because to see it makes a really big difference as far as you recognizing the impact. Not only that, but Delmar Fire Department had their awards banquet. Like to thank all those for their service and their extended service, up to 50 years of service in, in, in the Delmar community, which means so much to Wycomico County. I know that Councilman Holloway was there as well. We, we had a good night there. The other night, Project Reed also had its banquet. And I'd like to thank all those people that are associated with the library and Project Reed for teaching adults and others that who are, who are compromised in being able to read and, you know, go through the normal routines, helping them break out of that and, and actually learn to be more self-sufficient. It was very interesting, they had the individuals that had actually taught and then they had individuals that were actually students. And it's very surprising to see how much success they've made with that project. And the only other thing that I did was really kind of fun and very important was we had the first renaming of, or dedication of a road for Mrs. Loretta Jolly. And I'd like to again thank April Jackson, all those people that went so much trouble to try to make sure that we, we got this process underway. And I thank the county council here and the executive for putting this together. So that now in Wycomico County, if you have someone who you feel is very deserving of having a road in Wycomico County named after them, we do have a process whereby you can apply for that and, and hopefully get it approved. So that we can have that ceremony for that other person or individual who is deserving of, of that recognition. So it was a very, very well-attended event and I'd say there were probably about 40 to 50 people there. And it was nice to see the signs going up for the first time. So that was it. Joe?
Short comment, being Weston's in the room. You know, Weston, we used to have a Johnson Grass program. Has there been any talk about anything about the wisteria, trying to, trying to address that?
The, the way the wisteria was handled was through the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Council. I know they're looking at other potential, I'll say vegetative-related invasive species. To my knowledge, no. The only program I know that is, is in our budget is the Gypsy Moth Program that we, we still work with the state. But that's something we can, we can look into. Because there's, there's a variety from wisteria and other locations to, you know, even just the prickly pear. You know, some of the thorns on, is it the Calory pear that can puncture?
I can address that a little bit because I'm the council rep that serves on the Natural Resource Advisory Committee. And actually, you know, we've, some of the projects we have, we have one with the city of Salisbury, because it's also in the city park. And we've also got some grants and some funding to be able to combat it. In fact, it is in the budget, actually, there is some funds in the budget for a matching grant that we've applied for to, you know, to help combat it. So, you know, so.
You can call it the wisteria hysteria.
The wisteria hysteria.
Any other comments, Joe?
I got to tell one of you.
That only happens at evening meetings.
I obtain a motion to adjourn so we can go to open work session.
Time moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session is the budget shortfalls or capital improvement program. Mr. Weston Young. Looks like Mr. Baker.
And Mr. Matthews. Coming with backup. So we come before you tonight, we have three projects that require additional funding to complete. They are the Morris Mill Dam, the airport water main extension and the detention center roof. In your briefbook, we provided some details regarding the needs. Dallas and Pate here will, will go into more detail. It should be noted, some of the numbers that you saw have changed slightly in the time since we submitted the documentation to, to get in the briefbook. We're still anticipating about a $3.4 million surplus in the fiscal '19 when it, when it gets closed out. And if you're okay, we can just go in order as it is in the briefbook. Okay, so for the Morris Mill Dam, I'm going to pass things over to Dallas.
Yep, so as we've been trying to educate the public and, and folks, you know, we, we started the construction of the dam back last September. And probably about mid-October or so, when we started to dig into the downstream slope, we encountered water coming through the dam, which is not supposed to happen. So we called up Maryland Dam Sa, or Maryland Department of Environment, Dam Safety Division, had them come out and take a look at it. And they basically said, no, you, you guys got to stop and revise your design because the original design didn't account for that type of water seepage coming through the dam. That was the big holdup through the late fall and, or through winter and early spring. The contractor was able to start back up again in late spring and has been steadily going ever since. But the dam design changed significantly to include things like 30-foot-deep steel sheet pile walls on the downstream slope, a significant amount of armoring and rock on that downstream slope. There has to be a sand filter and drain system within the dam structure itself now to account for any water that can safely be passed through that, that steel pile wall. So we worked with the contractor and the, the designing engineer to come up with a revised cost estimate that puts it right around $3.1 million for, for the cost of the project. We originally had $1.8 million budgeted. We did not use all of that. The, the current price was $1.5 for, to do the work. So there is still a little bit of money in the existing project account. But we do come before you now to, to ask for the additional money.
What did you say was 3.1 million?
3.1 million is the cost for the, the work right now.
The total, that's, that's what it's at now?
Yes.
And I know we were here a couple of months talking about this. Was that the same figure, 1.3 million you were asking for back then?
Yeah.
It was, that hasn't changed?
No.
So you know we have constituents in the neighborhood nearby.
Yeah.
Need an update. You got any idea when that road will be open?
Yeah, so originally, we were telling folks that it was going to be open by the end of the year. And unfortunately, we've, we've taken a look at the, the project progress and it's now, it looks like it's going to be backed up until the end of March.
Whoa.
Yeah, that's a significant revision. We've, there's been some challenges working around. There's an active six-inch gas main out there that we are not allowed to shut off. We've worked with Chesapeake Utilities to, to try to get that main shut off, but that's slowing the progress as the contractor gets closer to penetrating into the upstream slide. There's also the overhead electric on that upstream side. In addition, the soil within the upstream slope, like actually in the pond bottom, as you can imagine, is, is muck. It's going to require some significant work. We're going to have to pour, it's called a mud mat. It's like a low-weight concrete in there so that we can have a stable surface to actually build up and start putting in that control structure out there. There was also hope that we might be able to open up the road earlier, but it's looking like the, and when I say open up the road earlier, which is like gravel. But the gravel sits on top of that sand filter that I mentioned earlier and it's looking like from notes with MDE, we're not going to be able to put traffic on top of the gravel because that would impact the sand, drive the gravel into the sand and it won't be able to do what it's supposed to be doing.
Is there any way to have it open to emergency vehicles only?
Right now, no. There is, you would need the, the generally to jump that chasm to get across from one side to the other.
But I mean, in the future.
Yeah, in, in the future, I, I think, yes, there is a possibility. Right now, the, the challenge is we can't, we can't take out the old stuff until the new one's in place. The new pipe, the new outfall structure has to be online to let the water start passing through that before we can rip out the old pipes. That was another requirement from dam safety. They said you can't take out the old until you can, until the new stuff is in there and it can safely pass. So we're working with that challenge as well. So once the new pipes are in, things will potentially be working better. But they're getting ready to, to move into that pond area and start the construction of the, that, that outfall structure. So, yeah, once we get past that, things will potentially be able to start plugging along faster. The contractor can think, thinks he can bring out a, a second crew to also start working. We're, we're also potentially looking at maybe just, you know, right now it's Monday through Friday. We're potentially looking at starting weekend work as well to see if, if, if we can save some time on that. The, the challenge there is while we might be able to save, say, 30 days on the contract, if we finish in March, great. If we finish, if we say we finish in February and the asphalt plants are closed, you've just spent all that money to finish early, but you still can't open the road because the asphalt plants aren't open in the cold weather. So it, it, it's something, we've just got these numbers and dates today. I will be updating some of the folks, like the, like the Emily Drive HOA, about this information. I'm, I'm sure you'll be hearing from other folks as well. I, I believe me when I say that it is Public Works' number one priority to get this job moving and, or keep it moving and, and keep progress going. Again, since the contractor started back up in the spring, they've been steady going. I, I know you'll hear folks say, well, you, I don't see anybody out there. Well, you got to remember, that trench is about 20 feet deep. There are guys down under the ground that you can't really see. And, you know, we, we've been using some of these town hall meetings.
They had been parking their vehicles near that fruit stand.
Yeah, and they still are. They, they still are. They are, they are out there. I know I've received calls from folks saying, I don't, I didn't see them. And I think they was out there that, that day talking to the contractor.
I, I ride by there often and, and I, I don't forget that it's closed now, so I drive the long way. But days I'm not doing anything, I'll ride by and check on it. And I see the. But days I'm not doing anything, I'll ride by and check on it and I see the workers out there.
And we are meeting with the contractor and the Maryland Department of Environment, Dam Safety. We have a conference call on, once a month and then we also have a meeting on site. So every two weeks, we're having meetings with the contractor, with the designing engineer, with dam safety to go over that. Whether it's a conference call or site visit, we alternate since, you know, dam safety is driving.
Will you let me know next time you have a meeting on site and maybe Councilman Hastings would like to attend?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
When you were talking about the gas main, I mean, that wasn't anticipated? I mean, it's been there. I mean, when the estimates were done?
Yeah, it was shown on the plans and we, there's, the gas company's been out and they've expressed some concern. It's an old steel main. They'd like to see that upgraded to poly. Yes, it was a known condition. It's, but you get up there and you start working through it. You're, we're putting in seventy-two-inch concrete pipes, so you got to remember, they're about as tall as I am. And you're lowering them in with an overhead crane and you've got an active gas line there. The hope was when the project started, Chesapeake would let us turn that gas line off. We can't.
I mean, I would have thought they would have checked.
There was, you know, there's the difference between when you're bidding the project and when you're actually doing the work. I'll say we have been trying to foster a better relationship with Chesapeake, but there have been challenges. They're not willing to turn the gas main off. From what I understand, there's a four-inch gas main that feeds Fruitland and the six-inch. And if they shut the six-inch off, they say they won't have the capacity to serve all the fruitland with the four-inch gas main. So we're trying to put these six-foot diameter concrete pipes lowered twenty foot into the ground with an overhead crane right next to an active gas line. You kind of have to go slow to make sure nothing catastrophic happens.
I guess if it does happen, Fruitland will be without gas, right?
I'd be more worried about, there's a lot of things that, yeah.
I'm not judging about it, but what I'm saying is, you know, you would have thought that would, there'd been some foresight there.
And I think there was. And again, I think the contractor is doing everything that they can to keep the project moving. They've been very responsive, especially with dealing with the redesign in the middle of a project.
Yeah, also, I think you will say, I sent an email over this afternoon or there's been a couple come across. I think it's probably in your inbox.
Yeah, and I didn't want to reply to that until I had a chance to speak to you all. Yeah, I was just trying not to catch you guys flat-footed when the March 30th comes out. I'm sure there will be a lot of concern from constituents. And again, feel free to pass it my way. I will apologize and explain everything to anyone that calls and wants an update.
I heard that on TV. I thought, well, you're going out on a limb making that.
Yeah, I try to be upfront with the information that I have and it's, you know, it is what it is. If I could wave a magic wand and get it in there tomorrow and have that road back open, believe me, I would. And if I saw a way to get this project moving faster, I would too. But it's, we sat down with the engineers in the house, with the contractor, and just looked at these plans, trying to figure out a way to get things moving. It's, we have to get the new stuff in before we can start ripping old stuff out. So it's unfortunately a very linear approach. There's not a lot of double work you can do until that road's been excavated to put the new pipes in, excavated again to take the old pipes out. And then at that point, things can start getting buried and you can kind of start working with two crews, one on the upstream, one on the downstream side. And again, you know, you can also, you know, show anybody out there what's going on.
So are you expecting a possibility that it may be delayed beyond March 30th?
No comment?
I know there's always a chance, but what do you think?
You know, and the reality is, I thought when I was saying the end of the year, that that was it. I, so now I'm saying the end of March and.
You got the weather content with.
Yeah, and we specifically brought that up with the contractor as well, saying, hey, look, you know, does this include bad weather? And, yeah, they've accounted for that in their updated schedule.
All right, Dallas.
Okay, the next project we wanted to talk about was the airport water project. Last week, we secured funding from the State Board of Public Works. We received a maximum amount of grant in the tune of $1.5 million and a low-interest loan to the tune of $2.9 million. The additional funding request that was in the memo was for $326,000. The state was able to cover some of that. So the request for this project has been reduced down to $127,000. And that's part of the sort of match to the state money. So, you know, this 127,000 helps match the roughly 4.4 we're getting from the state.
So the 326 that we have in front of us is wrong?
Yeah, it's changed. Yes. Yeah, it's been updated since we found out Wednesday, last Wednesday at the Board of Public Works meeting. So, yeah, that's.
What caused it to go over? Because we did, the county did get a significant grant for the airport.
Sure. Dallas, you want to touch the construction administration, like what this actually goes to pay for?
Yeah, so what we're looking at is George Miles and Bureau had done the design for the project. We wanted to retain them for the construction administration. That way, if the contractor's installing it, has specific questions about the project or if we need someone to review the material shop drawings and things like that, we wanted to retain them specifically since they had the innate knowledge that went with designing the project. I didn't want firm, you know, Acme Firm, asking about, having to answer questions about GMB's design. GMB knows what GMB meant and can answer them best. By selecting them for the construction administration, it precluded them from being eligible for the state grant and/or low-interest loan because to be eligible for that, it has to be competitively bid out. And we didn't want to run the risk of, again, of having one firm try to answer questions about another firm's intentions.
When should that project be completed?
From when we break ground, it should take about a year. We will be able to hook up, say, like the terminal and Piedmont Airlines ahead of time before they finish up in the business park. So some of those wells out there have heavy metals and turbidity and nitrate. So we can get them hooked up sooner before the projects ended. And then lastly.
Sorry, that's okay, sorry. You know, in looking at the CIP, the only thing I saw in the CIP where there was even, where there was any funding discussed, it was just a low-interest loan from the state of Maryland.
Yes.
And so I'm wondering, where did the, where did the original 326 come from and the 127? If in the CIP that we just went through, there was zero dollars listed. There's some that was coming from engineering.
Sure.
Is that still coming from engineering?
Yeah, that was to do the design.
Okay.
And then we were hoping to get, as with any project where we're getting grant money, or in this case, grant and low-interest loan, we're hoping to get it fully covered. Morris Mill was a good example of that, the water project out to the contaminated wells there. And there's a lot of similarities between construction administration for that and Morris Mill. Yeah, this was something that we hoped we would get fully covered by state and local or low-interest loans. But a match is required is the gist of it. So we are requesting the match. So we do need to modify and that's what I'll get to in terms of funding. But the CIP will need to be modified for that. But that's for all three of these projects. And the third and final project is the detention center roof. I'm going to turn this one over to Pate. He did provide a memo on the need. And if you want to touch on the difficulties we had with that as well.
I'm assuming everybody has the note and has read it and somewhat familiar with it. We started this back in the spring of eighteen by getting an engineering study done. Long and short of it is, we had hoped to be able to put a system on the detention center that would have allowed us to basically renew the system after twenty years. And by renew, it's a, it was a resin product with embedded fabric that in twenty years, we could use a chemical etching agent and come back and put another layer on it and get another twenty years out of it. And the total thickness would have only been about three-quarters of an inch after the twenty-year second application and it would have been extremely lightweight. What we found was the initial construction was poor. The number, the components of the roof system were not properly adhered. And we did several lift tests on it. By lift test, I mean, there's a strip of material adhered to the existing roof. And then there's a scale, a pull scale put on it. The test strip has to meet a certain pounds per square inch requirement to hold in place. And it didn't meet that requirement anywhere. After that, we found that, in this process, we found that the International Building Code no longer allows a ballast roof. That roof up there is almost three acres and it's covered with gravel the size of the gavel head. We can't put that back on there. So we basically have to go down to the lightweight insulated concrete layer, put a vapor barrier on it, a fiber board, an EDPM membrane, and then on top of the membrane, we have to put roofing pavers.
Do you have to take the gravel off first?
Yes, the gravel comes off.
And I've always been concerned, because you've seen that happen over the years, when there's a lot of snow, the weight, is that a problem?
No.
Not for this?
That's, no. Actually, the roofing pavers are lighter than the stone ballast, but they interlock and they're adhered together. The problem is, we're in the edge of the hurricane zone at 126 mile an hour rating and these stones become projectiles. So we can't use them.
Sure.
But the good news for Dallas is we'll have about 700 tons of stone that roads can have.
Now, we will take it.
But we did an extreme amount of testing on this and we actually have, we have some money from the past previous two-year CIP. And we determined last year, after we got the first bid of two and a half million dollars, that it would be more feasible for us to come in front of you, drop that last year of the CIP, get a good bid and come in front of you and explain what's going on and say, here's what we need to do. So basically, we're here to ask you tonight for 1.1 million dollars to, or 1,015,000 dollars to get this job completed.
But you don't really know what's under that roof. Like, there could be water damage.
Well, we have some leaks, but nothing is to the extent that it's not manageable at this time.
Okay.
So we have leaks all over the jail.
Why is, why are we doing this out of anticipated surplus money instead of just putting it in the CIP?
Sure. So I know with Morris Mill, they need the money as soon as possible.
But it doesn't sound like it's the biggest rush in the world.
Sure, yeah, we could, we could delay. We could delay the roof, roofing project.
Well, I'll add to that. Our bid price was only good until the 29th of last month.
So it's over with anyway.
No, not necessarily. Well, I've been in contact with the vendor. He's willing to hold his bid, but he's not going to hold it forever.
Well, I know, I know you need good roofs. I understand that. But also, I look at, we're talking about anticipated surplus. We're not talking about guaranteed money.
I can't address that.
The FY19 books are not closed. The estimate they have from, I guess, this October 17th memo and what I got yesterday, there's about a $50,000 difference in the surplus. You know, total what we're asking for is now about two point, I'll say five rounding up, out of 3.4. We could, I would say, delay the roof project, put it in the CIP, but we would have to rebid it and maybe put some escalators on it.
Could we, could we forward fund this money and then put it in the CIP? And I know that's just juggling money, but.
So the proposal would be, we would request to amend the, this current year, so fiscal year 2020, amend both the budget and CIP to reflect these amounts. And we would then request the funding come from the unassigned fund balance, which would basically be specifically the FY19 leftovers.
I mean, we, you know, I've been going to these town hall meetings that Bob's had. You were there, or some of you were there anyway. You know, hearing about Carlin. We keep hearing people talk about possible recession. I don't know whether that's necessarily true or not, but I don't, I don't think anybody else does either. So I get wondering about, you know, this anticipated surplus and, you know, how is our fund balance being drawn down? And a roof is something that's definitely financeable because of the length of the time that it lasts. You see what I'm saying? I mean, we don't borrow money to put carpet in, but we can borrow money to put a roof on. So I guess what I'm looking at here is we're trying, spending money that we're not sure we have yet and looking for a safer way to go about it, I guess.
We can still use the surplus eventually.
Yeah, so, yeah, what we're looking at is that when they close out the books that ended June 30th of this year, our estimates roughly 3.4 million. That could, that could change. That could be 2.5. So that is, that is an estimate. If we don't do anything with it, it will go to our fund balance. And we're proposing pulling from our fund balance. So we could pull from the existing money that's there and this 3.4 will just go in or whatever the number works out to be. You know, we're under the amount by about a million dollars, so we feel safe requesting from that.
Yeah, I don't think you want to delay anything or put anything off.
I wasn't suggesting delay it, though. I was just suggesting.
I just heard you say the possibility of delaying it.
Well, if we, if we waited to put it in the next CIP and then bond it, the next CIP would get approved with the budget June of 2020. And then if we bond it, we don't usually go to the bond market till October, so that would delay it about a year. You know, if we have to do it, we have to do it. But we're, we would like to, because once the roof goes, everything tends to go.
We don't need to delay the roof. I wouldn't suggest it.
Understood, understood. Sorry.
Yeah, I think we all can agree that the Morris Mill project can't wait. And we've got to do that sooner before later, sooner than later, so it needs to be funded. But I'm just curious about the anticipated surplus of 3.5 million. It seems like a lot of money.
We've, we've historically come in under what we budgeted year after year and that's what's helped build the healthy fund balance. We then usually propose using prior year fund balance to fund some projects. I think it's par for the course. I think we have a fairly lean budget. And sometimes it's salary savings, sometimes it's, you know, revenues came in higher than anticipated or whatever leads to the surplus.
Well, you know departments are going to question why their budget was cut when you always have a surplus.
Correct, correct.
Any other surprises that you might anticipate?
These are the biggest ones. I will say, just for clarification, in the briefbook, Dallas's memo that explained, I believe it had an August 7th deadline or date to it where he explained the Morris Mill Dam. There were two other pipe projects that were listed on that memo. We have determined after testing those that they can wait till the CIP process, so we are delaying those. At the time Dallas wrote that memo, you know, when you have pipes deep in the ground and they're starting to corrode, you have sinkholes and you could possibly have a major washout. We, we thought they would be emergency projects as well, but we are a little more comfortable in terms of pushing those.
Yeah, we've gone and unpacked the holes and, you know, whenever you have us saying. a, a sinkhole forming, you gotta wonder, is this something that just showed up overnight or has it been slowly happening? So, we'll go out, pack the holes closed, and then keep an eye on it and see how long does it take for that depression to reform, if it reforms at all. And, and the rates of that they're reforming, we're comfortable right now saying, okay, let, let's just put them. And they are included in the CIP for FY twenty twenty...
The draft, the draft CIP that we're working on now.
Cool.
I was just, I was just wondering when you said that your books would be closed out by April, April thirtieth, but they're not.
Oh, well, the, I guess the fiscal year ends June thirtieth, and then they start the closing process at that time. The auditors are involved as well. And I, I don't have a date for when those books will be, be closed.
Aren't they, aren't they usually done by now?
Correct.
Is it a holdup or?
Um, we had significant staff turnover in that department, and we've, we've hired a local accounting firm to help basically move things along. Yeah, so, anytime now, hopefully.
The question I had, is this the same roof that was in the CIP? I'm assuming it is?
Yes, I think it was eighteen, seventeen and eighteen, or eighteen and nineteen.
I think eighteen and nineteen.
Four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars each year.
Well, I don't know. I thought it was, I thought it was four hundred and eleven thousand for two thousand twenty-one.
I thought that got removed.
Um, we had it, yes, we had it proposed, three pots of four hundred thousand dollars when we got our original estimates. And as Pete explained, what we thought we could use on that, on that roof wouldn't, could not be used, given once they actually got digging up and seeing the issues.
Yeah, I thought it was only amount of four hundred and eleven for one year.
No, it was three, I think it was three years.
It was over three years.
Maybe I've got a...
Yeah, we, we can find what CIP that, that showed. The, the intention was to break it up over, over three years. We also thought we could phase it and do sections and try to take it in manageable chunks. But as Pete mentioned, once we got into it, we realized there was, there were bigger issues at play.
And that also, by reworking how we bid it and reworking the timeline, it cut a million dollars off the contract. Because guys start, they want to keep right on going. The way it was initially set up was in a phase, there are three basic roof assemblies over there. And the way it was set up by the engineers will do this section, this section, and this section, not continuously, which, which means they've got to mobilize, demobilize. There was a two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in mobilization costs in the first bid. So, Nick and I looked at it and just said, okay, this is, this is what we gotta do. We gotta make this more efficient, put it back out to bid, and we got five bids this time. So, you know, and, and it's a million dollars cheaper.
Pete, what is mobile, mobilization cost?
On a job like this, the contractor charges for coming to the job with his equipment, and he charges you for taking his equipment away. It's a standard line in the AIA document.
Yeah, with, with, say Dallas's project, it's the cost of bringing the crane to the site and then eventually removing the crane from the site.
And, and because of the security requirement there, there's some special needs that have to be met to get the workers on top of the building. You know, it's, it's a little funky up there at the jail without you have to do this.
Do you have to put guards up there?
No, no. They will not, guys will get checked initially. They will have to do background checks on them, and they will not enter the facility at all after the, the first initial setup. You know, they'll have to get in there first few days to get their stuff set up, but after that, they'll have a scaffold or a, a stairway set up to get to the roof. Everything will be creamed to the roof. You know, it's very little contact inside the facility. And that's part of what you have to pay for.
I think part of what Joe touched on, I think, I think it's really important that we get some idea of where this surplus came from, the three point four seven.
Sure.
If, if you're gonna approve the spending, we certainly need to know where the surplus came from or where it is, how it exists. Any other questions from, from council?
I will, I have to, on projects like this now, in the upcoming CIP, I am requesting funding for engineering studies before we request funding for the project.
Right, and avoid surprises, hopefully.
Hopefully. I mean, you know, avoid, avoid situations like we've got here where, you know, we think we're ready to go with a major project, and all of a sudden, we got to not put the brakes on, we got to go to a screeching halt. So, I think going forward, I hope I don't have to see you guys in this capacity again. I, I think we're taking steps to prevent this.
Good. Anything else? Any other questions?
When are you gonna break ground with the airport?
We're hoping in, in the coming months for the water project.
Do you have a date?
No, we don't have a date yet. There's still some documents with the city we're finalizing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, given it's built to city standards, just like, just like the Morris Mill Water Project, we had the city of Fruitland involved at every step of the way. They approved the water tower before we accepted it. MDE's involved. So, where we are now is just making sure the city has everything they need to operate, maintain it while, once it goes in.
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion, council to adjourn so that we can go into closed session. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, post?